Actually, are more expensive to serve. And so our rate structure reflects that cut difference in the cost of service. By doing that, we're able to avoid subsidies amongst customers. So we don't have industrial customers being subsidized by residential customers. The other thing that we have are system development charges where new connections. When a new house is built or when there's a new commercial facility that's connected to the water system, they pay a one-time capital charge and offset the cost of growth. So we're not asking our existing customers to pay the cost of growth. In addition to that, we have some other fees and charges that the district does as part of the proposal that will be considered in September. These are miscellaneous or other fees and charges. We have a host of those that we're recommending to increase largely to keep pace with inflation. So these aren't significant increases, but we need to make sure that the customers receiving those miscellaneous services are paying their fair share so that our water rate customers are not subsidized. We are proposing a new fee to replace placards for our bulk water customers. Customer loses that, that's one of the fees that's included in here. We are proposing a new meter box installation fee for traffic rated meter boxes. So it's more expensive to put those in. Some new developments will put the meter box in a driveway. Needs to be traffic rated. We're asking that cost to be borne by that customer. You can see a whole list of other things that we're doing. Probably more important is some of the additional fees for the meter installations. When we're asked to come out to a site to install a meter and it's not ready for installation because developers are prepared, there's an additional charge for that. There are more details in the big proposal itself. Put it in perspective, these are the costs for installing meters that we're proposing to increase. Obviously, the cost of larger meters costs more and that's just material services to be able to acquire those meters. Service installs, that's actually installing the pipe from our main to the customer privis. Those who earlier going up. As I mentioned, the new fee for the return visits of $140 there. The traffic rated meter box, $155 for the smaller ones and $180 for the larger ones. And then the last I want to cover are the plan review fees. So these are fees that are imposed on developers when they bring a subdivision in. Our engineering team needs to look at that to make sure it meets the district standards. We are proposing increases in those plan review fees as well. And all that is in the presentation for your consideration. The other question that we often get is what about customers? Some are more financially vulnerable customers. What if they can't afford these investments? And what does the district have for them? And I want to talk a little bit about our rate advisory committee. In 2016-17, we actually convened a rate advisory committee and started looking at our rate structure. We reconvened a new rate advisory committee this past year and asked them a couple of questions. First was to look at affordability for customers and how they would afford it. Interestingly enough, back in 2016, when we had our first rate advisory committee, we forecast that the rates that we'd be looking at by 2025 would be about $105 a month for the typical customer. We're slightly below that now and we're hoping to keep it at or below that $105 estimate back in 2016-17. But for those customers, we did convene a rate advisor committee and ask them those questions. This was a diverse group of customers. We can't be more thankful for their efforts. They spent hours with us talking about affordability of water and how the district can help those customers. It was folks from around the district, a broad demographic group. And interestingly enough, they came to unanimous recommendation for our board to implement a customer assistance program with the parameters that are identified here. First, it was recommended that we limit the program to low-income customers. So if you're low-income, you would qualify. If you happen to be a senior citizen, but you aren't of a low income, then you wouldn't qualify. The reason for that was to try to focus the benefits on those customers that needed the most. The recommendation was to provide a 20% discount on those customers that qualify their bill. The idea there was to allow that benefit to help customers with large families to make it a percent of the bill. So if they had a very high bill, the amount of the benefit would be higher. And they also recommended that the program be funded proportionally on our fixed and volume charges paid for by all the customers essentially integrated into our overall cost structure. And that was proposed before as part of our budget when the budget was adopted. I'm going to go through the actual proposed rate increases that we have. So the district has two components to its charges. One is a fixed charge that's based on the size of your meter. The fixed charge for larger meters are higher because it costs more to provide service to those meters. The fixed charge includes the cost of bringing meters, maintaining the meters, maintaining the services, billing customers, sending out bills, processing payments, but also includes a part of our public fire protection cost. So a lot of the cost for the water system is to make sure that we have enough water throughout the district so the fire department can connect to those hydrants and provide fire. So that is also included, part of that is included in our fixed charges.
Can you point out for our guests what the standard size is for residential?
Just a minute and I will point it out right now. The most common meter size for a single-family residential customer is the 5/8 inch meter, which is $21.25 per month. The numbers I'm going to be presenting here tonight are monthly costs. Most of our residential customers are billed bi-monthly, but we present on a monthly basis to make it easier to compare it to your other utility bills. We also have a block rate. So there are two rates, one that's at the block one level and the other block two. The difference is in the quantity of water. I mentioned earlier that our water rates are designed around cost of service. So if you use water and you peep more on the water system, then you're going to have a higher effective rate by paying that higher block two rate. So the block one rate applies for all water that is consumed up to 14 CCF per month or 28 CCF in that bi-monthly period for a single-family residential customers. For other customers other than single-family, it's 140% of their average annual consumption. So it moves each month, we recalculate that.
All one more thing.
Yes, we also mentioned what the AWW estimate is of residential use on each month. How many CCF a residential house uses each month relative to your block two stacks? No way.
Just right there, President Sanders.
That's awesome.
We're going to end this right on target. So what I'm presenting here now is the impact on a typical customer. So the most common bill that the district issued is for 7,000 CCF. That's about 5,200 gallons of water. They're measured in hundreds of cubic feet. That's what CCF stands for. 5,236 gallons to be exact, or 22 tons of water. So under the current rate structure, that bill would be $70.46 per month. The increase is Tom and the kid earlier tonight, $15.53 November 1 of 2020 this year. And then another $15.04 effective November 1 of the following year. And that is for the typical customer with that 5/8 inch meter using 7 CCF of water. But we also have customers that use above average. So we wanted to present the information for those customers as well. So this would be a customer consuming 12 CCF per month or 24 CCF over a two-month period. It's about 9,000 gallons per month or 18,000 over that two-month period. 37 tons of water per month that we would deliver. And you can see the increases here in the fixed and the volume charges and the total bill increase. About $23 on this November and $22.50 in the following November. And then for customers who use quite a bit of water, this would be a very large customer, somebody with very high use. This is about 21,000 gallons of water per month or 87 tons of water. We're talking about these increases here. Very few customers use that much water in a month. With that, I'm going to turn it back over to CEO Hickman.
Thank you, Paul. And I'm sure we're almost through. So just want to go back through where we start is what we've heard from our customers is how will the community benefit? What you heard from David Karaska tonight is we are getting a seismicly resilient water supply to this community. That may not seem like a lot right now, but after a seismic event, it will mean a whole lot. It literally can be the thing that keeps the economy and our community held together after a significant seismic event. So that's how we all benefit as a result of making this investment. The other question was, are we managing costs responsibly? You heard from both Dave Karaska and Paul Matthews how we are doing that. We are making sure we are doing cost competitive procurement for things. We're making sure that we're using our dollars and investing our dollars to make money. So we're doing our best to manage these costs and stay on top of that. The other question was, are customers or all the customers paying their fair share? You saw that 95% of our customers are residential, yet the residential is picking up about 70% of the cost of this project or of all the rest. And then the issue of affordability. You heard at the end from Paul Matthews that we do have, in fact, as of July 1, we have approved in the budget a program to help our low-income customers. It's going to take us a little bit to get this program off the table. This is not a light switch event. We have to go through some process to get this done. Our goal is to have this up and running available to our customers by the beginning of this year. So we're working on that. There's a couple of other things here that I think are worth mentioning. One is that we are partnered with this project with Hillsborough and Beaverton, but it's important to remember that TBWD is carrying the largest financial burden on this project. It's tied to our use. It's not an unfair thing. It's just there are people that look and do the comparisons and you have to understand that the percentage that TBWD is picking up here of this increase, of the 320-some million dollar increase, TBWD is responsible for about 220-some million dollars of that increase. So it's a significant portion that is impacting our customers and our rates. So what are our next steps? Well, as soon as I'm done here, we're going to open this up for a public hearing so we can hear from all of our customers that are here. And then we will continue to receive and consider public comment, as I mentioned at the start, until 4 o'clock on August 24th. So at that time, we will close public comment. And then on September 20th, the board will consider adopting the resolution 14-23, which would adapt these rate increases. So with that, I would like to turn this back over to you, Chair.
Thank you, Tom. Before we begin, does the board have any questions, staff?
Great, thank you. Before I open the public hearing, just for those folks that are virtual, let you know we're going to hear testimony from folks here at the TBWD headquarters first and then we'll also invite virtual comments as well. So that'll be the order this evening. I will now open the public hearing for resolution 14-23. It's a resolution establishing water rates and other service charges for the Tuolumne Valley Water District. I'd like to remind staff and members of the public that commissioners are not expected or obligated to respond to comments during the public comment time except to ask for clarifying questions. Any public request for board action will be referred to the chief executive officer for review and coordination with the board president. At this time, is there anyone who wishes to comment on 1423?
I didn't sign up for that.
There are some at the entry, but you can still comment.
You can still.
Yeah, feel free to have a seat.
There's a.
I thought I had to sign a little thing or something if you want.
You can do it after.
You can do that after, it's okay. But you can go up there and.
I would, I'm just jotting down a few thoughts here. Actually, I thought there would be more people here, so I thought.
We'll wait just a minute here and then we'll have a comment.
What do I need to say?
Button on the microphone. If you push that, the green light will come on and we'll be able to hear you.
Can you start with your name and your address?
Rich. Could you push the button so she can? Oh, you got it? I'm sorry. I want to unmute.
My name is Paul Carson. And my street address, 16139 Southwest Shelton Street, Aloha. I've lived in the Aloha area for almost 16 years now. I am requesting a little more specifics on the outside funding sources. I didn't read the whole report, but I'm just wondering what the federal sources are. EPA, I think you mentioned EPA. Also, if there was any of the federal, I think there was COVID development funds. I forget the exact term, ARPA maybe? If ARPA was looked into as an option? And floating an election bond? I mean, I know we get infrastructure bonds every now and then. Now it's another question I had about sources. I just haven't had a lot of time to look, to read your materials. So that was another thing I was looking at. My other request is to, in the materials, to quote the rate increases as percentage in addition to dollar figures. Because I think the dollar figure is only relative to a typical home. Whereas when I did the calculations, it looked like it was about 22% increase for both fixed rate and also the other usage rate for both years. And in the past, it had been, I mean, it just would be easier to compare apples to apples and oranges to oranges. So to illuminate those two increase ratings. Personally, we use, we try to keep our water usage down. So we typically, I brought my water bills, in the winter average, it's about five CCFs. We try to be very conservative. So our rates will probably increase roughly in your figure about that is what I figured. But I noticed over the years, it seems like the rates are typically in the three to five annual increase. So 22% increase really got our attention. And my husband's retired and I am probably going to approach it soon enough smoothly on fixed income soon. Affordability is my other question about going forward, like what happens? So in September, our rates increase. And then in another, in less, in another year, so in a year and three months or four months from now, there are going to be another 22%. So that's 44% increase over what we're paying now. And then what's going to happen in 2025? Are you going to go back to your normal rates of three to 5%? Or are we looking at, you know, we don't know what we're looking at then? So I do value the improvements, the seismic improvements. And I'm a public sector employee myself in a regulatory field dealing with wastewater treatment plants. So I am sympathetic, but at the same time, with a measured degree of sympathy. Thank you for your time and thank you for holding the in-person.
Do we have anybody else here in that list? Do we have any virtual attendees who would like to present? Sam would be the first person, please.
Yes, so we have Matt and I will unmute you, Matt. And it looks like you can unmute yourself, actually. That would be the easiest thing to do.
Matt, can we ask you to state your name and your address, please, before you begin?
Sure, hi, everybody. Thank you, my name is Matt Nicholson, 1147 Southeast 63rd Lane in Hillsborough. I actually have quite a few questions, but I won't try to bore the board or the management committee. But thank you for allowing me to express some concerns. You know, the focus of the conversation, the financial conversation seemed to be on, you know, the fact that the costs have increased because of inflation. Well, we all know that inflation, even in the worst of times, going back to the Volcker years and even current COVID years, has only been about eight or nine percent per annum. You know, so if you assume that for this project, that should only be about a 20% increase. But this represents, what, a 40% increase or 38% increase? So it suggests to me that there really was just a mismanagement or poor budgeting. Part of it would be blunt, but I think it was poor financial planning on this project. And like the other person who just spoke, I'm sympathetic to the cost of this project and what this project will do, but I'm really concerned about the increase. And I'm really concerned about the fact that the rates are going to become permanent. That's a question. And then, well, I'll pause there and let somebody respond if somebody wants to.
No, you can feel free to continue, Matt.
Okay, you know, so I'm concerned, you know, again, that the rates are going to become permanent and that once the debt for this pipeline is paid for, that the rates are never going to come down. And I don't know if, you know, and I know that the other individual, she just spoke and talked about the increased cost. Well, my wife and I are retired also. And this represents a significant increase in our cost of living here in Washington County. And we've lived here for over 30 years. And quite frankly, I think these cost increases for not just the water utility, but for all other utilities is pushing a lot of people out of Hillsborough. We being one of them. And I wonder if you're taking that into consideration. And I guess, you know, what? I'm really concerned about, you know, who does the board here represent? The citizens of Washington County or Tuolumne Valley Water District? Because if we're having this conversation and we're really doing this in the public interest, you know, who's the constituency that the board's going to make the decision based upon? I'm really concerned that this is all but a formality and the decision's probably already been made. And that we're sort of all just talking in circles and talking about this project. That obviously is necessary, but seems to have been mismanaged. And I say that because I spent 30 years in corporate banking. So I've seen what happens when companies do good budgeting, good financial planning, good capital budgeting, no offense. But I've also seen what happens when it's done poorly. And I suspect that this is really poor fiscal management and we're all paying the price. I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam, we have.
Is there anybody else in chat who would like to submit public testimony this evening? Okay, William, feel free to unmute yourself and we'll turn it back to you, President Sanders.
William, can you please state your full name and your address, please, for the record, before you begin?
Do not have that.
William, are you there?
So helpful, at the same time, irrefutably difficult to deal with when it doesn't work. Go away, prefer it to work.
Okay, so William said he will actually prefer to type up his narrative and he'll be emailing it to me and I will be transmitting it to the board.
Great, thank you, William.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Do we have anyone else this afternoon?
Sam, that was, that note was from Matt, the first person who testified online.
Oh.
So William may still have.
Oh, so yeah, William is still, okay. William, are you still with us?
Maybe he can chat in, he's having issues with audio.
Okay, William, you'll need to unmute yourself because I'm actually unable to do that for you. So we'll give you a moment here.
No, we're going to have a meeting tomorrow in this room. Why don't we invite him to come in for that meeting?
I believe William's virtual. He can attend virtually and he can certainly weigh in tomorrow night.
Give us, give him a second chance.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, sure. And I believe I've, William, I've sent you the information for the meeting tomorrow night already. So. Are you on a, if you're on a telephone, William, it's star six to unmute.
William, again, just to reiterate, we'd like to invite you to come back in and join us virtually tomorrow evening. And I believe Sam has forwarded you a link to the meeting so you get your opportunity to speak. Don't want you not to have your opportunity. We'd love to hear what you have to say.
Also, just a reminder for William, if for some reason he can't attend tomorrow night, he can also go to the website and put in his comments at the website and send them that way.
Excellent, great, thank you. So whatever technical barriers we're running into right now for you, William, please, we will find a way to communicate. At the very least, you can call, at the very worst.
Is there anybody else who would like to submit a public comment this evening? Not seeing any.
Not seeing any, that? Well, then I'll thank everybody for their comments. I very much appreciate it. And then we will now close this public hearing. The board will continue to receive public testimony on this matter and consider resolution 1423 at the September 20th, 2023 regular board meeting. Next item is that we will consider the second reading and adoption of ordinance 01-23, which is an ordinance amending and restating rules and regulations, section 7.0, the legal adjustment policy, and we'll have a staff report from Andrew Carlstrom. Or maybe from even Councilman Clark Balfour first.
Thank you. I think this is our only slide, is that right, Andrew?
That's it.
Okay, that's correct. So enjoy it. So I'm Clark Balfour, general counsel for the district. Two weeks ago, at a special meeting, we held. Two weeks ago, at a special meeting, we held a first reading and public hearing on Ordinance 01-23 to amend our water leak adjustment policy. Now, we're coming back to you after notice and an opportunity for further comment tonight here in just a minute, to have our second reading, public hearing. And hopefully, you will adopt Ordinance 01-23 so that we can get this leak adjustment policy in place, which replaces a, or our current policy, which is a little bit more difficult to administer. And so we think this is going to be a more effective tool to enable staff to make decisions on how to adjust water leaks in the future. So Andrew Carlstrom is here to talk about the mechanics of the leak adjustment policy. If you have those questions, it was a topic that we covered in depth a couple of weeks ago. So at your pleasure, we can get into the specifics of it. But otherwise, we just ask you to open it up for a public hearing. And then if you're so inclined, I think you have the request that we have a motion to read by title only, and then a motion to adopt this. And it would be effective at midnight tonight because we did attach an emergency clause to it. However, in order to make that emergency work, this will have to be a decision of the board. So with that, I'll answer questions, or Andrew's available as well.
Do we have any questions from any of the board members? In that case, I'd like to open the public hearing for Ordinance 01-23. Is there anyone who wishes to comment on Ordinance 01-23? Each person is limited to five minutes, unless the extension is granted. Just to check, are there any virtual members, any folks out there in the ether who would like to comment on the leak adjustment policy?
Not seeing any.
Not seeing any. I will now close the public hearing and ask on the board, do I have a motion and a second to perform the second reading of Ordinance 01-23 by title only?
This is Jim Downe, so moved.
Can I second?
All of the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All of those opposed, aye. Not hearing any opposition, the motion passes. District Recorder, could you please read the ordinance by title only?
We have before you Ordinance Number 01-23 and ordinance amending and restating rules and regulations, Section 7.0, leak adjustment policy.
Great, thank you. And then finally, I do believe we must have one more motion to approve Ordinance 01-23.
This is Commissioner Lysick, so moved.
This is Commissioner Dugan, second. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, aye. Not hearing any, the motion then passes. Thank you, everybody. At this time, we'll move to reports by the Chief Executive Officer and management staff.
Again, President Sanders and commissioners. So we spent a lot of time tonight talking about rates. But just a reminder that we did hold a virtual open house and we'll be holding another one tomorrow night. And that will be the last opportunity for folks to hear our presentation. They still have opportunity to weigh in after that date. We have gotten a number of comments that we've been providing to the board on our Thursday memo of terms of what's going on during the week. So we are hoping that the board is finding all of those informative. I just want to assure all of those that are in attendance listening, we staff review each and every comment. We carefully read them. These are not things we blow off. We seriously consider them. Make sure that our responses are directed at being able to answer those comments. So the other thing tonight, we just received this week GFPA award. And that's the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada has awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to Toowlet Valley Water District for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. The report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting. And its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. I find this timely. And I do want to say, you know, I've had my career opportunities to work with different financial folks. Our financial team here is outstanding, led by Paul Matthews and his staff. They truly are gifted. They take their job very, very seriously and consider every dollar that we take from customers and spend. It is something we take very seriously. They're not the only ones, all of us as staff do. And I just want to assure the board and any of the public listening tonight that that is not something we take lightly. We take our fiduciary responsibility very seriously. With that, unless there's questions for me, I'm going to turn this over to General Counsel.
Good. So we have the Department of Labor, it's the right one. So it's, okay. See here, it works, okay. So this is the legal department report. Last time I saw you to talk about things that we're doing, it was back in April. So some of this is a little bit of a follow-up from those topics. So I thought the legislature ended recently. Mr. Fisher is certainly aware of that. So I hope this isn't too painful for you to relive. But if you can give us five minutes, maybe it'll be, maybe it'll be okay. So I thought that we would talk about what we talked, what we discussed in April. There are a few handful of bills. Those items of particular interest to TBWD. But what I'm about to say tonight is not comprehensive. Do not take this as a comprehensive dissection of the bills. You will get a full and complete report by SDO and other sources soon. And I am glad to answer questions, but it's, I don't have all of the details of how things happened in the building when it was down. So first off, these are the items that we discussed back in April and items of particular interest to TBWD. Happy to say that House Bill 2647 regarding harmful algal blooms passed. This was pretty important to us because this now sets a framework with DEQ and the Health Authority to assess rivers, to undertake monitoring and testing and recovery of those rivers that provide municipal drinking water. And so this was a good bill for us and we're happy that this passed. Now, of course, it's going to take rulemaking and some other things that they'll have to do. But it's the first step that we have to have, and that's great. The next one is House Bill 2805. And that was the handing decision that came out of Lake County a few years ago about convening public meetings, deliberations, those sorts of things. And essentially, the central holding was that, you know, the use of kind of serial discussions, serial written communications, those sorts of things, could constitute a public meeting among elected officials. So you need to be careful about how we convene and how we deliberate. The outcomes from this bill are, you know, one, better definitions as far as what convening means. There are, there's a good discussion on what deliberations are. These were always gray zones in the Attorney General's handbook that we use pretty religiously in terms of getting guidance on how we conduct public meetings. And there are, there's just better definition where we can give you solid advice on how and when you can do your job. And so we're pretty happy about that. There are some other things that came out of it. One, there's going to have to be mandatory training for public officials. Now, at least one time during your term of office, you're going to need to go for mandatory training on public meetings, public records, those sorts of things. And the Oregon Government Ethics Commission is going to conduct those trainings, which is great. There's also an opportunity for certification of trainers so that then you could conduct them in-house. So for example, myself or someone from the district could go, become certified by the OGE C to conduct trainings and that we could do it in-house. But in any of that, it's going to have, there's going to be a requirement and a commitment by you to go to these trainings, and they're always beneficial. So I think, I think they'll be, as always, I mean, you do it already, right? I mean, you do it every year on a voluntary basis. So this isn't going to add to your workload. But just know now that we've moved from a permissive to a mandatory. So I don't think that will inconvenience you at all. And I think it'll be good. I think whether we decide to certify folks here in-house or whether we go to the OGE training, I think it'll be solid stuff for you, for your job. The other thing that is a little bit of a new thing in this bill is the Government Ethics Commission is now authorized on its own motion to review violations of the public meeting law, right? Or the public meetings, your conduct of those public meetings. So there was a bill a couple of years ago, maybe two sessions ago, that said, okay, if we wrongfully hold an executive session, the Ethics Commission can come in and essentially issue citations and then start their investigatory process and move it to contest a case. This expands, this now not only has the executive session on it too, but also just the regular open public meeting part. And it doesn't have to be complaint-driven. It can be based on information that the Ethics Commission sees on their own, like a newspaper article or something like that. Okay, so I don't think that's going to make any difference to what we do or how we do business here. But just know that there are a few changes and we're going to make sure to follow. The next one is something you're going to have to pay attention to sooner than later. And that is 2984, which is system development charges upon conversion from commercial to residential. So we've got a lot of commercial buildings. There's been, part of the governor's strategy is to take commercial structures, convert them to residential. And if you, if you think about it, you know, a commercial structure may have a big space and it may have a small kitchen, it may have, you know, a couple of restrooms. And then all of a sudden, if you turn that same space into two or three or who knows how many living units, each with a bathroom, each with a shower, each with laundry facilities, all those kinds of things, you could see the increased load and demand that that's going to have on the system. Well, part of what this bill does is it allows us to essentially recalculate the system development charges and move them from, say, one residential meter to whatever the equivalent is for one commercial meter for the equivalent of the residential meters. So that could be a significant change in cost. And, you know, there will be a credit for the existing meter they already paid for, just like we do when folks change the classes of service. But in a way, it's kind of going the other way often. You see redevelopment where maybe there's been a house or two houses that goes away and now you've got a 7-Eleven store or some kind of mall or something like that. Usually, the recalculation is the other way. This one is going to reverse that. What we have to do is by December 1st of this year, we need to go through and adopt an acknowledgement that we have a program in place for this conversion. And then we can go and make those recalculations. So you'll see this probably in October or November at the latest. And then we'll be lined up to continue on. Essentially, it's a way for us to keep pace with our demand and usage and to make sure that folks are being charged for that and we're not having subsidies in the program. At the same time, it's also to encourage that, you know, coming up with more housing units for folks to live in. So it's, we'll have to do some work on it and you will be hearing about it sooner than. In conduit hydro 3097, that allows us to essentially use water in our pipes that we can generate electricity from. So that was approved, that's good for us. House Bill 3125, the Lea Ratepayer Assistance Fund, that one didn't make it. We were, that was going to be, I think, $15 million, Tom, for water and sewer ratepayer relief. I'm not sure, I don't think the money got appropriated by Congress, which was going to be passed through. So this one died in committee. And I think, while you heard Tom earlier during his report, talk about, you know, assisting Amlo at the congressional level to try to get this Lea thing back on track. So do you have anything to add to that, Tom?
No, other than that, this has got the attention of a lot of folks. Every time we have been able to access this kind of funding for our customers, it has been used almost instantly. And it's been a huge help to our low-income folks. So to have this not funded, it's a bit of a kick. So we will try to get, in working on a national level, to get Congress to fund this program so we can help our customers that are in need.
Thanks. Senate Bill 635, county right-of-way fee. So that was right now. The statutes say that cities are entitled to charge for rights-of-way fees, franchises, those sorts of things. There's a specific statute that says counties cannot do that. And so the counties have, came up with Senate Bill 635, which would have allowed them to charge for a fee for permits to put new items or reconstructed items in the right-of-way and pay essentially what, how it was characterized, the fee of issuance of the permit, the permit inspection. Not necessarily a franchise fee or some other right-of-way fee based on revenue generated by the utility, but more of that snapshot amount for the cost of administering that program. That died in committee and primarily because, I mean, I think folks recognize the counties have a legitimate interest. But the investor-owned utilities were very afraid of this bill. Because if you think about, you know, particularly rural counties and where you've got, you know, miles and miles of lines, overhead wires, that sort of thing, with few customers, and yet the fee for something like that, they thought, could be pretty high. So they fought it. So it didn't, it didn't get out of committee. On the other hand, it's going to come back because there's already a work group of the counties, the investor-owned utilities, municipal water and wastewater and other folks, and telecom, trying to come up with a package that folks can live with. So that's going to be pretty active and we'll see it again. I don't know if it'll be in a few months during the special session, but it will definitely be back in 25, if we don't see it here next year. We talked about Senate Bill 848 on designer immunity. That was a statutory change to dictate the way that any indemnity clause should read in a contract between public agency and designers. We didn't support it, but it went through. It doesn't really change, in this way, it does not change our ability to try to obtain indemnity from our design professionals if they are negligent in the performance of their services. What it does change is the process that we have to go through to make that recovery. And it just makes it a little more difficult and it's more elongated as well. So it's, I look at it as you can get to your goal, but there's going to be a few logs rolled in front of you that you have to hop over as you're doing. but there's going to be a few logs rolled in front of you that you have to hop over as you're doing. Okay, so those are the ones we talked about before. And then there's, there's just a few others that might be of interest. And how I got 2296 ahead of 2295, I don't know, but I'm, I'm going to take them out of order here. So 2296 retiring work back. So there was a provision that allowed retired employees to work back with their public employer full-time. And then the, the amount of money, I hope Kylie's here listening to this.
I'm listening.
Okay, because I'm going to get this wrong. The amount of money that we otherwise would have paid for pension obligations and contributions for that employee now goes to, we pay to a fund which helps defeat these are unallocated, U A L, yeah, unallocated, actually. But it is, all right. Close enough, thanks. I'm getting critiques over here from, from the audience. I, I probably should have passed on this bill, just had to talk about. Anyway, so.
Could you give us sometime in the future examples with numbers in them? So we can see if this is a little thing or a big thing.
Yeah, we can. I mean, it's, it's so really, it comes down to how many work back agreements do we have? And how long they're going to go? I think, I think we can provide that information pretty quickly. It has not been, I don't think it's been a big deal here. But at places like the fire district, police agencies, folks like that, work back has been a much bigger thing. What was going to, why this bill came about is because the program was going to expire in, at the end of 24. And so this bill extends it for another 10 years. But the employer has a lot of, uh, I think discretion in how to use it, whether to, whether to employ, bring a person back or not. But we can, uh, we can provide you whatever you need on, on, one, the program in general in, as across Oregon, and then we can talk about how it's affected us here at 12 Valley. Let's see, veterans preference and contracting 2295. So this one's a little bit different. You know, this, there, there's a series of statutes that talk about preferences in public contracting for M B E, D V E, W V E, disabled veterans, uh, contracting organizations, emerging small business, that sort of thing. This one expands it to any veterans owned, uh, business as far as qualifying for being contracting preferences. So, so it is an expansion. I, I think there's probably going to be some rulemaking and other things that come out of it. But that's something we're keeping our eye on because it may require us to adjust our contracting procedures a little bit. On 2806, um, this was a, is a specific allowance to have executive sessions for cybersecurity issues. Well, cybersecurity and security of facilities and securities of people. And people includes all individuals like you, staff and volunteers. And, and so the reason this comes about is a couple of things. Number one, um, you, you can only have, until this bill came along, you know, you can only have an executive session for the specific items that, that are enumerated in the statute. Now, we've always, we've been given a little bit of a, uh, boost in that regard with, uh, with our utility facilities, because those are essential public facilities. And there's other provisions allowing executive sessions and public records exemptions for, for security of our water system facilities. This takes all those questions off the table because it now provides a clear exception for us to hold an executive session to talk about any of these issues. And, and most importantly, it really clears up the, uh, the, the question of, you know, security around our facilities from a personal protection point of view versus a penetration of the facilities that could wind up as perhaps an, an act of vandalism or a terrorist act or something like that. So I think this is pretty helpful. House Bill 3414 was an expansion of the U G B and a waiver of land development standards. This, uh, this one was, was part of the governor's package, if I remember correctly. And I think it failed by one vote. So that was, uh, I don't think the governor was very happy about that. But in any event, uh, that one, that one probably will come back in some, some shape or form. I'm not sure, but it's, it's something that had a lot of energy behind it. So we'll see what happens. Senate Bill 417 also did not make it. That was, uh, a provision that would allow discounts for fees for public records requests in, in the public interest and typically by media organizations. It did not pass, but it is going to come back. We're going to talk about this. This is a hot issue, particularly with the, the media. And, and so I think that, uh, they're going to take another look at it in another session. House Bill 2050 also failed, but it was a provision to allow employees who were exiting or separating from an organization to donate their sick leave for other employees. So it did not, as I said, it didn't pass, but it's one of those things that I feel is probably going to come back again in another session. And the final one is House Bill 2757. That's the monthly charge for the 988 system. So pretty significant investments by the legislature in, uh, mental health. And this is part of that, the 988, uh, suicide prevention and, and suicide crisis management system. But part of the funding of that is a 40 cent per month charge on any line, cell phone, landline that can access the 911 system. So all of us are going to see an increase in our personal monthly cell phone bill by 40 cents. But, you know, you, you, you can't argue with the purposes of it. So anyway, um, finally, finally, we have a few things that were referred for election in November. Rank choice voting, House Bill 2004. There's a S J R 34, that's a compensation commission to establish salaries for statewide offices, including judges. And then finally, uh, H J R 16, which I think was, it might've been driven a little bit by Secretary of State Fagan's issues. But what it, what it does is it sets impeachment procedures for statewide offices, governor, secretary of state, state treasurer, attorney general, as well as judges. So, um, I, I think as they started considering issues, they thought we need to tighten up our process. So that's what these are, but they are going to be referred to the voters in, uh, 2024. And with that, I'll entertain questions. Great, thanks very much.
Thank you, staff, for all their hard work. Clark?
I'll pass it on to him. I'd off, but here I am.
You're, you're a good leader. All right, uh, we'll move on to Commissioner Communications and reports of meetings attended. Uh, we'll begin with Commissioner Dome this evening.
Okay. Well, let's see, there's tonight's meeting, there was the work session on the first, Talking Water on the second, uh, the open house on the fifth. And then I attended another seminar on the risks associated with dam failures. That's it.
You, Commissioner Nugent?
I had a similar list. First, I attended the special meeting session on the second, I attended the Talking Water virtual open house. On the third was the water supply system board meeting and executive session, which is our regular, uh, every other month meeting and then tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Nugent. Commissioner Fisher?
On first, I attended the special board meeting. The second, I also attended the Talking Water, uh, session about the rate increases. On the eighth, I attended a meeting with, uh, Tom Pinkman to talk about the board agenda for this meeting. On the 10th, I attended a W G A, Western Economic Alliance, government relations and land use planning meeting to discuss U G B issues important to Sherwood and other regional partners. And then I attended tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Lyson?
On the first, I attended the special board meeting as well as the work session. Uh, on the second, the, uh, rates virtual open house, uh, and then tonight's meeting.
Thank you. And I'm a month behind, so mine's rather long. So we'll go all the way back to the end of June. I did the D W C executive committee meeting for executive committee issues. On the 23rd of June, I met with, uh, Washington County Commissioner Pam Tries to ask the very critical question, how come clean water services doesn't do anything for their customer assistance program? And the answer was, I don't know. That was her answer. I don't know.
In her defense of, I mean, she, she's one of the less tenured members, uh, may not have the whole history.
Yeah, but she also said that she'd be willing to look at it in the future. So I'll mention that again in the second. 26th, met with Tom with a legislative update. We all know, uh, what happened at the end of June. Did some paperwork signing of here at TV W D, uh, agenda planning meeting in July. Talked to my fellow commissioners about vice president stuff at our monthly board meeting in July. Uh, and then starting in mid-July, I've been communicating with, um, West Loop Water District Board Chair, Susan Maramber. She and I are working alongside with our CEO and our general manager on a plan to bring our two boards together to talk about opportunities that could exist in collaboration with each other. Then on the 24th, I met with the mayor of Everton, um, Lacy Beatty, to talk about customer assistance. And she promised me that she would meet with Pam Tries in early August, probably last week, and she would ask her the same question I did, which was, how's the comment you guys don't help your customers with customer support? So, um, clean water services getting pressure, you know, at least two of their, uh, partners. But hopefully it'll be, uh, make a difference. Met with Tom on the 25th, uh, then met with the S D A O consultant. So one of the things that the West Loop Water District Board Chair and I agreed on was that, uh, we would like to take a look at getting an external consultant to help with kind of, uh, planning, discussion ideas, et cetera. And so we contacted S D A O and we have a consultant that can work for us for eight hours for free. And, um, we met with him on, we, I met with him on the 28th. Then Susan and I met with him on the 14th of August to talk about those things. Um, and then I've met with Susan a couple more times since then. And then, uh, talked to Tom yesterday about some of our intergovernmental relationships and then tonight's meeting. So it's like half of what I usually do for a month because I was gone in Hawaii the whole time. So with that, then we'll move on from that and we'll move on to public comment. Public comment time is set aside for persons wishing to address the board on items on the consent agenda. In matters not on the agenda, additional public comment will be invited on agenda items as they are presented. Do any persons who'd like to comment? So this is another opportunity if you'd like to speak to the board at all. Okay, um, we'll move on then to our consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any board members may request that an item be removed by a motion for discussion and separate action. Any items requested to be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the board has approved those items which do not require discussion. This evening, we'll be seeking approval of the July 19th, 2023, very near meeting minutes. The August 1st, 2023 work session meeting minutes and the August 1st, 2023 special meeting minutes. Do I have a motion in the second for approval of the consent agenda as of present?
Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher, I second. There was a motion by Commissioner Dome, seconded by Commissioner Fisher. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Not hearing any, then the motion passes. Item number three this evening is addressing our TV W D facility naming policy.
Good evening, commissioners. Um, um, for guests in the audience, my name is Kylie Byer. I'm the human resources director.
Oh, they're going to make her go to the podium.
Why?
It's okay. Make her to the podium. She was looking really comfortable back there. She just kind of flipped on the, the mic and was like, yeah, we just stay right here. Nope.
Can you hear me okay? Do we need to hit this one? Here we go. All righty. Um, so for those of you who don't know me, my name is Kylie. I am the human resources director here at TV W D. I have a very brief presentation this evening for the board regarding a facility's naming policy that you'll see in your packet. So I'll refer you to the staff report and the draft policy that are included in there. And this comes up as the board has expressed interest in naming a facility after former Commissioner Dick Schmidt. And we've since reviewed, uh, sample policies from other organizations throughout local government and also in higher education where naming buildings, facilities is a much more common practice. Um, and pulled together a draft to present to the board. So I encourage you to take a look at that. And feel free to direct any questions either to me, you can also send those to Tom. And then I believe the board will be reviewing all of board policies, uh, in January of 2024. So if you'd wish to approve that, then we can include it when you touch base on all of your other policies. I know that there is a facility that the board is looking at naming now. And that would fall a little bit outline, um, out of line with the policy itself, but that's perfectly fine, the board can do that. Um, so you're welcome to move forward on that. And I believe we're bringing that back to the board next month, after we've had a chance to communicate with, um, Commissioner Schmidt's wife.
Are we going to, uh, are you going to solicit ideas from the board? Like, you know, I'm thinking, my mother had a bus barn named after her. And that was the last thing on her agenda was the darn school buses. And I'm thinking, okay, nothing should be named after anybody who's alive. I think that's, that's, that's kind of where I'm coming from. And beyond that, uh, I don't care.
So, um, we, we will be, we, that's the kind of stuff, the feedback we want as we review all the policies. That's why we provided that to you ahead of times. You have a chance to review it, think about it, um, and those kinds of things, those kinds of restrictions. But what we just want to make clear is that while we're moving forward with this policy, it does not prevent us from moving forward with the naming of the Schmidt facility that we're working with.
Okay, we don't have bus parts.
We do have bus parts. Is that a question? We don't have any bus parts.
I, uh, you know, this building is named after somebody. And I don't know who that person was.
Is it? I did not know that it is.
Yeah, it was, it was a big deal when I joined the board. I was, you know, this is this, somebody, somebody, somebody building. And I went, oh, really?
Ivan G. McKinney, I remember. And, and it was brought up when the structure was renovated in 2004. And the name came off in 2004. But maybe Clark, you have a better reason.
No, you're, you're right. And, and it was, there used to be a, a cornerstone out here or what, you know, plaque in the wall, it was the Ivan G. McKinney, uh, Service Center. And Ivan McKinney was on the board in 1975, something like that, when this was built. And they apparently, I, I don't know the story, I only heard it second or third hand. Apparently thought that he had made a Herculean effort in this building if they named it that way. So, but you're right, it, it went away during renovation.
Motion is, was he dead?
My recollection is that, yes, he, he.
Oh, good.
May, maybe it was made for him, I'm not sure because at that time I was.
Here's where I'm coming from on this. LA built a brand new airport in 1960. And it was a huge, you know, huge, same, same airport they've got now. And, uh, the guy who built it was a guy named Norris Poulsen. And the whole facility is the Norris Poulsen Airport, except that he lost his job to Sam Yorney. And so I don't know what they did. And so I don't know what they did, but there's only a handful of us who remember that it was that Doris Poulsen. And I, what I don't want to do is have something that nobody knows who in the heck this was. Uh, but you know, but on the other hand, uh, I don't want anything named after me. When I quit being chief engineer in the water room, they went around putting my name on plaques. And it just irritated the hell out of me. So, um, anyway, uh, yeah, well, there's there's a warm place, I think, in all of our homes. So I think that's a good one. Uh, you know, there's other people that I wouldn't put on that list. And I've served with most of them. I I like you.
Well, again, I'd encourage the board to review the draft policy. Feel free to send any comments. Commissioner Dome, I've noted yours this evening. Um, and then we'll bring that back with all of the other board policies that the board is having in January. There are your questions and I will screen back to your spot.
The summary is dead people only?
Messenger's the use of that.
Thank you. Anything else uh, that we need to address this evening?
I I just want to comment briefly. I really liked the the draft policy that has been put together. Um, the three years, I'm glad that's that's a flexibility that that you you saw in there that uh, you'll write that. But I I think it is a good guideline that there's a expectation. Thank you. As I I've gone through the process of having to have named facilities after people who passed. And um, it it's it's more controversial than people can imagine.
Well, thank you, everybody, for the evening and we will gather out. That will adjourn hardly this evening. Thank you. We'll see you uh, not on seven.